Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I have a question on the four schools in South Burlington that did not get consolidated. And I'm looking at the comment that there may be renewal projects that might be limited due to site-specific conditions that are cost prohibitive. So I guess the question is, what kinds of things are we looking at Superintendent Merrick to that wouldn't be able to be fixed? And I guess I'm also wondering along with that is what the numbers are like versus the time we were looking at amalgamating.
Through the Chair. So we've still got a number of surplus classrooms in South Burlington. It's not quite as bad as it was a couple of years ago when we did the South Burlington Empire. But we do have a number of, we have four schools in there especially that have empty classrooms in them. And we do have a number of those schools that are coming up where they need critical repairs at the schools. And some of them, it's very cost prohibitive to do many of those large upgrades, just to the structure. And when we did the Empire, we were looking at potentially consolidating schools and building new, which is a lot more cost-effective than investing significant amounts of renewal money into each building specifically. But we do have a number of repairs that are going to need to be done there in the near future. So that's on the docket for 2020. We know we have some major repairs that need to happen there just to keep the schools running as is. But we have a year, I guess, to relook at the enrollments there and then ultimately make a determination at this time next year as to what the investment level will be in those areas.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. Just as a follow-up, I mean, at the time, we were looking at the Empires, and perhaps this is for Superintendent Nagoy, we were looking at running the schools at deficits. And I'm just wondering if that's continued due to not having the funding for per pupil place? And just kind of what kind of costs it's running the board now?
I think there's two aspects to that. It's a school that will have lower capacities or will have empty pupil places, it's not funded to maintain the empty classroom spaces. That funding has been phased out and hasn't been reintroduced with the moratorium on school closures. The other aspect is the condition of the schools and the fact that we, as an average for the school board, tend to be over the provincial average and we get very limited amount of school renewal funding, which we have to then disperse over all of our schools. It does take a number of years for us to be able to go around all of our facilities and update them.
Any other comments on that? No? All right, thank you. Moving on to 10.5, Summer 2018 Facility Renewal Cost Reconciliation, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So going back in time now, presenting our Summer 2018 Facility Renewal Projects and the cost reconciliation for those. So it was a very busy summer for us for capital projects, both on new construction and on renewal. We had roughly $10.5 million in renewal projects at five schools, namely Bishop Redding, Canadian Martyrs, Notre Dame, St. Mark's, and St. Michael's Schools. So all the renewal projects were completed over the summer and the actual expenses tallied up to $9.9 million, which is $566,000 under budget. We also completed 11 FDK Natural Playground Construction Projects over the summer, and those were across all four municipalities. The total budget for the FDK Natural Playground conversions was $2 million, and all projects were completed in the spring and summer. And the total expenses for those projects was $1.55 million, so $450,000 under budget. If you'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have at this time.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. And thank you to your staff also. I know that was a horrendous summer list that you had, a great job. 10.6, 2017-2018 School Year Waste Generation Report, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, presenting the School Waste Generation Report for the 2017-2018 school year. So this report is based on data from our waste audits that we conduct annually at all of our schools, as well as the annual collection data from our waste collection provider. So HCDSB met the region's target of 62% landfill diversion for the second year in a row. So we're happy about that. And the report outlines the individual school data as well as some of our waste diversion tactics. If you'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions, trustees? None? All right, thank you. 10.7, Construction Report for St. Mark Catholic Elementary School, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, presenting the St. Mark Construction Report for September. So the September work completed was the first floor to low-bearing walls, precast slabs for the first floor, and we started on second floor, low-bearing walls. So October work will involve continuing the second floor, low-bearing walls, installing the roof joists, and the mechanical and electrical services for the building. And we're still on track to open the school portion in January of 2019, and then the early-on center and the chapter follows shortly thereafter. If you'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have on that project.
Thank you. Any questions about St. Mark's? No? All right. 10.8, Construction Report on St. Scholastica Catholic Elementary School, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, presenting the St. Scholastica Construction Report for September. The September work completed was many of the finishing trades, HVAC commissioning, and the sod laid out in our schoolyard. October brings more work, so lighting controls, and then finalizing the gym and the library. It's been a very challenging September, getting the finishing trades in with the construction boom happening in Milton. Many projects in the area, I'll say, were not finished over the summertime and are still ongoing now into September, and we're competing with them for the finishing trade. So it's been really challenging getting folks on our site to complete those finishing trades, especially in the gym and the library. We're hopeful that the library will open in two weeks and the gym shortly thereafter. So before we get into cold weather, we'll have an indoor play space for the students in the gym. If you'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Any questions, trustees? No? All right. Thank you very much. 10.9, Municipal Elections Act Audit Compliance Committee, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with Section 88.37 of the Municipal Elections Act, the Board established a compliance audit committee to oversee the compliance audit process of trustee candidate's election campaign finances. The term of the committee members is December 1st, 2018, to November 30th, 2022. The committee is formed of five members as listed on page 108 of your package. The two external audit committee members, Jerry Farrar, David Morton, the former Director of Education, Fred Sweeney, and the two co-chairs of the Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, Karine Thompson and Filomena Volante. The administrative procedure of VI72 Election Compliance Audit Committee is also attached to this report. I'd be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Nagoy? Trustee Quinn?
Just one question on behalf of the public audience. What would the procedure be for public input into that committee following the election?
Public input into the, the committee members would be receiving from any voter a potential request or application through the municipal clerks requesting an audit into a candidate's financing expenses as they relate to the election. The committee itself then will assess every single application individually and determine whether to move forward or not with an application.
Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you. 10.10, Procurement Activities Update, Superintendent Nagoy.
Through you, Madam Chair. The annual procurement activities report provides an update on the competitive procurement activities completed during the 2018-17 fiscal year, outlined on page 127 of your package. Appendix A outlines the Board's sole and single-source providers, which have an annual review process. Appendix B outlines the vendors of records that have been qualified by the Board. Appendix C lists the consultants and professional services providers that were used during the 2017-18 year. And Appendix D lists the cost savings achieved during the year totaling $217,000 annually plus an additional $373,000 in cost avoidance and cost recovery. We continue to focus on collaborative spending in an effort to find the best value for money for our Board's purchases. For the 2017-18 year, approximately $21.1 million were procured in a form of collaborative procurement process. The list on page 130 of your package outlines the collaborative procurement through the year. And purchasing staff and financial staff have worked hard to address the recommendations of the analytics audit, the BAS analytics audit, which is our financial system, which looked at the vendor data and purchases. And the only outstanding item pertaining to the recommendations is with regards to the implementation of a new system and the ability of that system to look at data integrity. So just something to keep in mind as we move forward to adopt a new financial system. And myself, Dan O'Air, and we'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Quinn?
So one small question about cost avoidance. Can you give me some examples of how we save the money in the cost avoidance?
So we do have some furniture redistributions through the, or other resources through the system. So we're trying to have an inventory and deploy items before we purchase. And we also through the negotiations of the various contracts as well, and I'm not sure if Dan would like to add additional comments, but it's mostly furniture and equipment and other supplies that we could, or textbooks or learning materials that we have and we can move where they're needed before procuring new.
Do we have better inventory management than we had in the past that helps us to do that? Do we have better inventory management than we had in the past that helps us to do that?
We continue to have different leads in different positions. So Dan, for example, will have an inventory of furniture and equipment for the system, and it's a process that he would receive the request. So before he would place an order of new furniture, say, we need three classrooms equipped in a school, we would look at what's available before we would purchase. So you have that point of contact and the process which all the schools and the managers in the various departments are familiar with. So we have worked on having a consistent systemic process.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Murray?
Thank you. Just a comment, two questions, just to commend the staff on the cost savings and also the collaborative spending. The two questions are in regards to the vendor of record. Obviously, within the appendix, you have vendors of record that you upkeep, but I've noticed this lie in here for a couple reports, and that is, are the process of creating and maintaining a, like, creating a vendor, is this an enhanced vendor list that you're creating? And has that been ongoing? Do you have a timeline of when it's going to be effectively complete and then maintained after that?
That's a great question. It's an ongoing list. It's going to be a live document because we're going to keep updating it and reviewing their qualifications, but also adding different commodities or different service providers that we can qualify. So every year, we could look at different vendors or types that we could qualify for the system. So it will always be an ongoing process. But going back to the vendors that were qualified at a point in time, they also get revisited. And if they don't meet the qualifications, the insurance requirements, and so forth, some get dropped off the list, others get added on to the list, so it's going to be a work in progress.
If I may, my second question is in regards to collaborative spend. Just the, and also note, you know, that we, as you mentioned, we're historically higher than other municipalities, universities, school boards, and hospitals. That said, the Halton District School Board doesn't appear on this list of, and obviously we have relationships with them, with Bussin and things like that, but, oh, it is, okay. So we are, I guess, the Halton, under which one would it be? Because there's the Catholic School Board Services Association? And so do we have a significant amount of collaborative spend with them? Yes?
Board. Yes. So in, on page 130 of your package, you'll notice in brackets on that list, so it breaks down the different collaborative spends. I would just mention that it is a draft. We're still conducting the audit on financial statements, so we haven't finalized the numbers for the prior year. It's just a draft amount at this point. And it includes in brackets the collaborative partner, if you wish, or the source of collaborative procurement, and Dan would like to add something as well.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. You'll also notice that under a number of the contracts we have here is through the 8CPG, that's the Halton Cooperative Purchasing Group. So that's primarily the public agencies within the Halton region. Within that as well is included the Halton District School Board, so they would probably be a part in that. In one way or another, they may have led that particular competitive bid, but usually their numbers would be included in that to ensure we're getting the leverage from that.
Any questions? Any further questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. 10.11, Trustee Honoria, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Honoria has calculated in accordance with Ontario Regulation 356-06, which is attached in Appendix A. And I just wanted to mention at the time that we've posted the report on Friday, there was no notice of the regulation actually being amended. We knew that it's coming, and a memorandum from the ministry is still pending. I had checked on Monday, and it looks that it has been passed on October 10th. So instead of the original attachment, we've uploaded the revised regulation. As expected, it doesn't change any of the calculation or the policy that was passed earlier today, which was done on the previous communication from the ministry, that is now reflected in the regulation. So I just wanted to make that clarification, that now in the package, as well as the policy has the link directly to E-Laws website, which has the most up-to-date regulation. For December 1st, 2018, trustee Honoria will contain a base amount of $5,900 and an enrollment amount, which is based on the original budget estimates that for the prior year that have been submitted for the prior year. The attendance amount is an optional amount that according to our policy, the Board does not, elects not to pay, and the distance amount, the distance amount, is not eligible to our Board. For December 1st, 2018, to November 30th, 2019, the trustee Honoria will be $12,478, the vice chair Honoria $15,824, and the chair Honoria will be $19,169. And the calculation is detailed in Appendix A, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, okay. Thank you very much. And now we go to 10.12, Supporting Optional French Programming, Director Daley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The intent of this information report is to outline strategies that we're undertaking to support the long-term success and sustainability of our extended French and early French immersion programs. In terms of some of the decisions we've made, we've kind of kept a number of things in mind as we've looked at the overall needs and goals of the Board. Those include accommodating programs over the long term in the hopes of minimizing, if not eliminating, future relocations. Where it's feasible, we've tried to increase the number of locations that Extended French has offered to make it more accessible in our various municipalities. Where we've been able to align our elementary feeder schools with secondary schools, we've also addressed that. And in the instances where we need to relocate a program, allowing existing students to complete their studies, so to phase one program in as we're phasing one program out. So I'll just take you through some of the highlights in terms of changes in each of the municipalities, and then we'll open it up to questions. So in Burlington, currently, our programs are located in schools that have been sustainable and can accommodate our current enrollment and plan future enrollment. So at this point in Burlington, there's no changes being proposed. Oakville's had our largest number of Extended French locations. There's been the most consistent demand there over the last number of years. What we hope to do in Oakville was to realign some of our programs to support secondary schools. We have Extended French programs at all three of our secondary schools there. So the changes coming for Oakville are the following. A new Extended French program at Our Lady of Peace that would service OLP, St. Andrew and St. Mike's. A new Extended French program at St. John of Arc, which would service St. Mary's School and St. John Paul II. The existing Extended French program at St. Matthews will be phased out and moved to St. Bernadette's, which will serve as St. Matthews and St. Teresa Calcutta, and also continue to line up with Loyola. The Early French Immersion Program, which is currently at St. Mary's, will continue at St. Mary's. In Milton, as everyone around the table is aware, we've had a number of relocations over the last 10 or 15 years, mainly due to the rapid growth there. The changes that we're implementing in Milton, a new Extended French program at Our Lady of Fatima, which will serve as guardian angels in St. Scholastica and eventually align with Milton Number Three. To relocate St. Benedict's Extended French to Lumen Christie because of the pressures at St. Benedict's, and that will serve as Queen of Heaven and St. Benedict's population at Lumen Christie. And then to relocate the Early French Immersion Program at St. Benedict's to St. Scholastica. For Halton Hills, Halton Hills is a little bit different. We've seen some increases in the Early French immersion, but some static or declines in demand for Extended French. We've been limited in Halton Hills because of our existing physical accommodations. So as a result, a little bit of a different approach in Halton Hills. So the plan is to consolidate Extended French at St. Francis as the most central of the current locations. And then Early French Immersion will be split, kind of like in a middle school model, between St. Bridget's for grades one to five, and then St. Catherine of Alexandria for grades six to eight. That's something new for us. But in terms of our ability to meet the needs accommodation-wise in Halton Hills, that's the path we have going forward. There's much more detail in the report itself around some of the thinking in terms of where we're placing programs, but certainly open to questions that hopefully I can answer or other senior staff can address.
Thank you, Director Daley. Any comments, questions? Trustee Intimacy.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank staff because I know that this thing has been a monster to deal with. But I am curious as to how we're sitting with French teachers, qualified French teachers? Anyone?
Qualified French teachers? Someone? Joe?
Thank you. We certainly have filled all of our current positions. Where we're having challenges now are filling LTOs and upcoming pregnancy penalty leaves and other leaves that are coming forward. We did manage to fill all of our permanent holes this year. So there still is a challenge, no question, and we're working hard to try to go and find qualified individuals as those openings come up.
Trustee Intimacy?
Yes. I'm curious just to the LTOs because I would think that any student coming out of Teachers' College, that is French-qualified, is going to be jumping right into a full-time position somewhere. So how do we maintain LTOs?
Executive Officer O'Hara.
There's no question there is a strong market for teachers who are qualified in French. There are still some individuals that will take on LTOs because that suits their lifestyle, and they may not be looking at a permanent position for various reasons. We do have some individuals who are, for example, are retirees that are in LTO positions. We're very creative in that.
Any other? Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Chair Abund. I think this is fantastic work. It's good news, and it's fruit of a long and healthy vigorous debate we had.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Quinn and Vice Chair Murray.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just a question about the students who are in the Early French Immersion as they are approaching high school. The Extended French program in high school is aimed for those who start entering grade five, but we have the Early French Immersion kids who are starting a little bit earlier, a little more conversational. And the feedback I've gotten is that even my daughter, who's in Extended French, they sort of go back a bit in high school. They regress with the efforts to get all the kids back on the same page. So could we look at the potential for high school immersion programs somewhere in the Board down the line to suit those students who are coming out of a full immersion program?
Director Daley? Superintendent Picaso's also? Okay. Superintendent, fight over it? Superintendent Picaso?
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have a plan in place with regard to Early French Immersion students. If they do choose to continue in the immersion stream, there are seven additional credits that they have to attain by the end of secondary. So it is a different program from Extended French. There are some Boards that amalgamate both programs together, providing differentiated instructions to those students who are in Early French Immersion or French Immersion, as we soon will have to start calling it because it's no longer early. But we certainly have plans in place and are looking forward to that for the 21-22 school year, which is when our first grade nines will be entering. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, note the change to Our Lady of Peace for one of the programs, and that also makes sense given the space at Our Lady of Peace. But given St. Gregory the Great is just up the road from them, and in two years will be, I think, over capacity based on these numbers, could Extended French not be put? I know we have it in St. Marguerite right now, and I know Holy Family is right south of St. Marguerite. But that said, if we think there are going to be challenges with that area north of Oakville within two years, I assume you've looked at this at other schools as well. Could you comment on that, please?
I'm going to let Fred talk numbers a little bit.
Fred?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a quick point of clarification. Are we recommending, are you speaking to providing the Extended French program at St. Gregory the Great? Just to clarify.
Or at Holy Family.
Okay. With regards to that, for the reason why we have it split the way it is right now, as you recall, St. Michael's at this point in time right now, as we've fixed the enrollment with the consolidation with St. John's, that school is looking to be full over the long term. St. Andrews right now, having a gifted program as well as a strong regular-track enrollment, that one's rather full at this moment. What remains is Marguerite, Holy Family, and OLP. Our Lady of Peace right now has a very sustainable enrollment of approximately 350 to 380, which is usually the kind of enrollment that we're looking to house a program such as Extended French because it has a good core base enrollment, and that usually those are where you're gathering the predominant number of students for that program. We've seen in other schools when we added the Extended French at a very smaller enrollment school, that it's not as successful because it has to draw in from other areas at a more distant place. So that's one of the reasons why we put out Our Lady of Peace, because that would help the school get to a sustainable enrollment of 80% plus. With regards to St. Marguerite, the fact that it houses the Holy Family, St. Gregory the Great in itself is also very important because right now, St. Marguerite is seeing declines in its regular-track enrollment, and having the Extended French program is certainly bolstering its number so that it has a better utilization. In the absence of that program, St. Marguerite would see a lot more steady declines and a more rapid decline. Housing the program at St. Gregory, again, as you pointed out, we're going to be seeing enrollment pressures in the coming years. So again, we want to maybe pull away from those pressures and divert to other schools housing the program. And eventually, maybe if we see a new school in north of Oakville, then we'll explore a north-of-Oakville program. The reason as to why we're not housing the program at Holy Family is for a few reasons. One is that the base enrollment right now isn't what I would call very strong right now. In the grade-five cohort, you're looking at about 20 students that you have that might be feeding into that, and then you'd have to And then you'd have to draw from the surrounding area, and you'd have to be pulling them in a way that's a little bit more decentralized from where your population is, whereas Marguerite is rather centralized to its core enrollment. So that's why we chose that one and why Holy Family right now is getting the Extended French program.
Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. Thank you very much. 10.13 Accountability and Executive Compensation, Vice Chair Murray.
Very much. You've seen this before. It's just in notice of motion form. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board encourages practices that attract, retain, and reward high-performing employees who are effective at implementing the goals set out in the Board's strategic plan. Whereas the HCSB is cognizant of our responsibility to set out reasonable executive compensation limits that are fiscally responsible and respect great pairs. Whereas the HCSB recognizes the necessity of keeping executive compensation transparent. Whereas the HCSB believes executives must be held accountable for implementing the strategic plan of the Board. Be it resolved that the following types of compensation are ineligible: signing bonuses, retention bonuses, housing allowances, car allowances. And that changes to the executive compensation envelope shall go out for public consultation. Changes to the executive compensation envelope shall be approved by the Board. The distribution of the executive compensation envelope shall be approved by the Board before being implemented by the Director of Education. And that the Director is solely responsible for the hiring of all superintendents. Contracts will be approved by trustees before being signed. The contract of the Director of Education shall be approved by trustees before being signed. And that the HCSB may implement a salary grid for executives. The salary grid shall be approved by trustees before being implemented. The annual movements on the salary grid shall be reviewed and approved by the Board once a year on the recommendation of the Director, only after the completion of the performance appraisal of the executives. And that the Director will draft objectives for each superintendent on an annual basis in line with the goals and objectives of the strategic plan. The Director will submit these objectives to the Board by the last meeting of each school year for approval by the Board. The Board will draft objectives for the Director on an annual basis in line with the goals and objectives of the strategic plan. The Board will approve these objectives at the last meeting of each school year. And that the Director shall review the performance of superintendents and shall submit a written formal in-camera report to trustees that outlines superintendent's performance against their objectives. This will come to trustees as an action item for approval by the last meeting of each school year. The Board shall review the performance of the Director that outlines the Director's performance against his or her objectives. This will come to trustees as an action item for approval by the last meeting of the school year. And that the HCSB will post all executive compensation on the public website by August 31st under a section entitled Executive Compensation. Trustees will be given a report on the public sector salary disclosure list before it is submitted to the Province. And that language is exactly what's in the policy that was approved a second reading today. Thank you.
Thank you. With regard to... let's see now. Number 11.1, minutes of the September 11th, 2018 Policy Committee Meeting is attached. Correspondence, 12.1, we have a letter from Mr. Harvey. 12.2, a letter from Mr. Murphy. Do we have any questions, Rosie? None? All right. We do not have to go back in camera. I'd like a resolution, please, to excuse trustee Trias, who's unwell this evening. Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Intamasi, all in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you. And trustee Michael, are you giving the closing prayer? Thank you.
Could you please join me in a sign of our faith? In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, your word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our paths. Thank you that we can live in your light and walk in your truth. May the things that you have revealed and thoughts that we have shared dwell in our hearts and stir us to action. We ask this in Jesus' name, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much to all who have come out to join us this evening, and to all staff for all your hard work, and to all participation from trustees. Thank you, and have a safe trip home.